Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for today, Monday, November 28th, 2016. Could you please join me in a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before I begin this, for the roll call, you might notice there's a couple empty seats here. We have a couple of our council members are out of town and unavailable for this meeting today. And with that, I will call the roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Canepa, Mr. Torres, Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Ms. Gengona?
I'm here. Could we please have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's ordered. The approval of the agenda, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is also ordered. On the consent agenda, there are a number of items numbered from one to seven. And I've, have I been asked to pull, pull one, right? Been asked to pull item number one. Are there any other requests from any council members to pull any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'm going to request a motion for the passage of the consent agenda with the exception of item number one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is ordered. Thank you very much. Item number one is a commendation for Chris Williams, Wilson, on the occasion of his retirement. So, we would like to-
Mr. Mayor?
...this opportunity to say some nice things about Chris.
Yes, and actually, and Chris is here this evening, which we're very glad, and he has his family with him.
All right.
And so, I thought it was appropriate on this occasion to commend him for all of his dedicated years of service, working as a building inspector in the Department of Economic and Community Development. He's been one of our most senior members of our inspection group and has done a tremendous job over the years, working for the city, being very dedicated to getting the work done. And I know at times that we get complaints about how long it takes for inspections and that kind of thing, but it isn't because of someone like Chris who has not given 150% his entire career here to ensure that the work of the city is implemented effectively and that inspections are done in a timely way. And it's because of short staffing that we've had in recent years, that his workload, like all of our inspectors, has been inordinately high in trying to meet the demands for inspections in the city. And to work with property owners and business owners to voluntarily, he's been working on code enforcement as well, and to voluntarily bring code violations into compliance, he's worked very closely with those who have outstanding code violations. And his special touch in working with those people has resulted in them generally complying on their own without the city having to take further action. So he's contributed, as I said, an enormous amount as a building inspector here over the years, and we just want to commend him with the resolution that the council has on the agenda tonight and that you will receive subsequently, Chris.
Well, if it passes.
Yes. But we wanted to be able to shine a light where oftentimes, some of our staff don't get the light shone on them for all of their years of dedicated service to the city. And on the occasion of your retirement, want to thank you on behalf of a grateful community for your dedication to the city and to your department, and to your family, wishing all of you the very best in your retirement.
Code enforcement and building inspection, not words that a person likes to hear a lot of times, but when you really think about what it does, it's there to protect our health and safety. And so for protecting us and keeping us healthy all these years, I'm very grateful. Thank you so much, and have some fun in this retirement.
Chris, I want to say that, you know, I wish I had gotten to know you a little bit better. I think that, I've noticed when you're around, you're always, you're just always around with a smile on your face, and you're always very friendly, and you just seem like a really nice guy. And you're the kind of guy that I think we're really going to miss. And so, I really want to thank you for all the work that you've done on behalf of Daly City. Your personality, your character, I mean, I'm sure that has shown throughout our community and to the people that you interact with. You just seem like a genuinely nice person, and I congratulate you for everything you've done, so thank you.
Chris, it's so fitting that you're here with your family. You know, so I'd like to guess say something to your family, you know, he left every day in the morning, and he spent a significant part of his time here with his Daly City family. And we're going to miss him for the contributions, just like he contributed to your family when he was with you. He spent a lot of time here with us, contributing with us. We're going to miss him in that regard. But from what I understand, you're going to be busy beekeeping, raising chickens, and hunting for gold. So, all you got to do is remember your friends who are over here, right? Because, you know, funny things happen, and my understanding also is that you're going to be kept busier now than you were all those times that you were on loan to us. So, to the family, thank you for sharing him with us, and we appreciate it, but you know what? He's your problem now. Why don't you come up and say something? Come on. Come on up.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with the city for the last 10 years. I've also worked in Pacifica, and I worked in San Diego County. That's why I'm being able to, the opportunity to leave. I live in Sacramento now. For the last couple of years, been doing a lot of community back and forth, mostly during, stay here for the week. And it wasn't, it was hard being in separation, but I would say that I do know that everybody that I come and talk to for the last seven years, with mostly code enforcement, is trying to make the community safe, answering to the complainants, making sure things are taken care of, treating it like it's a mistake, not like they're breaking the law, and getting compliance voluntarily. My goal, actually, one of my, my goals to tell everybody is, look, I only charge when I have to do work. I should really be the only city worker ever out there that you don't want to see work, because then you have to pay something for it. But, but I will say that, just looking at my own stats, a third of the people would get my letter and call me up, and we'd talk about it, and we'd get them moving, and they never get cited. And a third of the people, they get cited. Third of the people, they tend to be no problem at all, to be honest with you. But it's been great. I know I go to bed at night knowing that people are safe, and I hope that the support I've had from the City Council moves forward to the next people, the next person that takes over for me. And it's challenging, to say the least. And I know, and this community has been blessed for me. I went out on a heart attack last year, and even my supervisor was pretty shocked at how many people came in there and honestly wanted to know how I was doing. I think it says a lot for how we're doing. I'm not that stamp-on-the-head type of guy. But with that said, it's been great, it's been working here. I'm sure that if people call me in the future with information or ask questions, I'm not going to have a problem answering those stuff, so please call me if you need to.
Thank you so much, and have a wonderful time.
Now, I will entertain a motion to pass that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. It's a resolution.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Aye, the resolution is adopted. Congratulations, thank you very much. All right, moving on. Communications, item number eight, major subdivision, the use permit and design review for a mixed-use building at 493 East Moore Avenue, staff. Mr. Alvin? Corey, sir?
Members of the council, I am Corey Alvin, here to present on behalf of the Planning Division, a 34-unit condominium project that has ground floor retail. The project requires a subdivision for the parcels that will be subdivided. Use permit is also required for the, because it's in the service commercial district, and design review is kind of ongoing, and of course, that's required. Let's see. Click. Not sure I have it. This one. Ah, here we go. Okay, the site is vacant currently. It is a former Shell gas station. The project proposes a subgrade parking garage. It's within the Sullivan corridor-specific plan district. The site is considered a housing opportunity site. The site is surrounded by, excuse me, 280 to the east, a corporation yard to the south, a, oh, you got it, sorry. A multi-family apartment complex to the west, and a vacant building to the north. This is a photo of the existing site. As you can see, it's at the peak of that intersection. It's a very prominent site. The circulation for the proposed building is such that the pedestrian, residential pedestrians will enter on Sullivan, commercial pedestrians will enter on East Moore, vehicular access is on East Moore, and vehicular exiting happens on Sullivan. Now, that exit there on Sullivan only accommodates a right-hand turn, so southbound or northbound traffic would need to go around the block. Not ideal, but it was the only way we could make the project work circulation-wise. Commercial parking would actually be on the ground floor. Residential parking would be below grade. The site would not accommodate the number of parking spaces that are required for the number of units. So the project sponsor is proposing a sort of lift system called the Klos Multi-Parking System, and it works by sort of a conveyor belt that moves cars laterally and also vertically. Yeah, click that video. Actually, yeah, thank you. So the way this works is, these things just kind of move as, and I guess there's probably another section on this that would require someone to know what they're doing in order to operate this, but it looks pretty efficient. It's being used at a number of locations in the Bay Area. I think the closest one is on Terravall in San Francisco.
What kind of, I'm just wondering, what kind of sound does that system make?
Sound?
Yeah.
That's a great question. I don't know. Maybe the applicant can answer that.
And who's controlling the actual movement of the cars?
As far as I know, I've seen other videos. It seems that it's automatic, and it would occur by, occur by a train, you know, whoever owns or uses the system needs to be trained on how to operate it. So, I've seen just the persons who own the vehicles come in and sort of do their thing on the keypad, and cars move around, and they get their cars.
And so if you want to, you come into the garage and you want to get access to your car, the ones I've seen, you just punch in on a little keyboard what your spot is, and some, and enter that you want it available to leave, and then you can get access to your car.
Oh, okay.
The ones I've seen did not make a tremendous amount of noise. I thought they would, but it's like a freight elevator.
Okay.
I mean, that's at least what I was hearing.
Right, so the way that it's been described to us is the, each user has a PIN code, punch it in, and the system delivers the vehicle to them. With regard to the noise, this is within a contained basement, so the noise emanating outside would not be audible.
Right, and this is not available to the public. This is for the residents.
For the residents, right.
So you have a specific spot that's yours.
Right.
Yeah.
This is the second floor, and on the second floor, as a response to Commissioner Edelman's concerns about open air, open space, the project sponsor responded by actually using the rooftop of the garage as additional open space. And this is the patio here. So, a space with some greenery and open air, and like I said, it's additional space. Architectural rendering of the south elevation. Architectural rendering of the east elevation, Sullivan Avenue, west elevation. Commissioner Edelman also had a concern with the blank sort of facade here. Whoops, sorry. And, sorry to put the dot on your head there. This here is something that they're going to try to carry through some of these blank wall spaces, along with using some sort of different type of material that would give interest in-
And so is that some kind of concrete that has a pattern in it?
Yes, yes, exactly.
What are those red things?
Those, as far as I understand it, those are just design features to sort of frame the balconies, just to give the building some fenestration, articulation, and so-
I'm not liking them.
Understood.
Should tell you really feel about them.
Yeah, well.
Well, I think one reason these are renderings is because I think they're flexible with the facade and the way these spaces are-
Make note of the fact that it's something that they might want to know about.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm assuming someone's here.
Right.
I mean, yeah, I kind of, I like the decision about the bottom, adding some texture there, and some horizontalness to it. I just, yeah. So the red things, the little boxes there, are basically just a design element. They're not holding anything up.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
This is a tentative map. I believe the engineers looked at this and has conditionally approved it. And these here would be the, these are the retail reserved parking spaces. To satisfy the inclusionary housing requirement, the project sponsor has elected to pay an in-lu fee as an alternative. That in-lu fee is $602, $602,96,000. That would be added to the Affordable Housing Fund.
It would have been 6.8 units, may I notice?
I'm sorry?
How many units, the in-lu fee is over $600,000?
Right.
But had they built the units, how many units would have been in that?
I haven't done that calculation, but-
20%, it would have been 6.8.
20%, yeah.
Yes, because it's 34 units.
It's between six and seven units.
Yeah, so anytime you're between six and seven, you're seven.
You're seven?
Yeah.
Got it.
And there's no way that they would accommodate the affordable housing on-site?
Usually for a project of this size, we do go to the fee. There's just an economy of scale that, you know, it's just generally felt, you know, for six units, we'd just rather have the money.
Yeah, okay.
Soil remediation has occurred on the site. There were four underground gas, gasoline storage tanks that were moved, removed in 2003, 2004. San Mateo County Environmental Health Division has sort of blessed this project and has decided that the case was closed. Read through the reports, and the soil meets all of the minimum standards. So, the only condition by the division is to make sure that they are notified before construction begins during the building permit process, to make sure that the site has remained clean.
Oh, so they will come back and check it then, as digging starts? Is that what you're saying?
Either, well, they will review, they will review the plans and then make an assessment.
Okay.
So the site is, or the project is exempt from CEQA, Section 15332 for infill development.
When, on the previous one, where you had the county checking for toxics and everything, so they actually did like core samples and stuff? I mean, they really got in the dirt and looked at it, or they just gave it a stamp of approval without actually doing anything? Do we know?
I read through the report. It seemed that they had done that work during that time, between 2003 and 2004.
Right, I know the place was tore up.
Yeah, while they were removing the tanks, that's when they did the soil samples.
Yeah, because it's a concern that if you have people living there, you want to make sure that the mitigations were actually done, and that somebody actually, you know, stuck something down in the ground to make sure there wasn't some other toxic there. Because a gas station, I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff that could have been in that ground, but they, if they actually tested it, great, thank you.
You're welcome. The findings are, the project is consistent with the general plan. Substantial damage to fish, fish and wildlife will not occur. Design of the subdivision will not cause serious public health problems. The proposed subdivision will not conflict with existing easements. And as mentioned, the proposed project is exempt from CEQA. There was a condition on the staff report, Condition 39, that has been corrected per your correction. So it now reads much better. All sidewalks, walkways, driveways, parking lot facilities, and easements within and adjacent to the property shall be maintained by the HOA in perpetuity.
Great. There's just a couple words missing, and I was going, what exactly are we trying to say here?
Thank you for that.
I'm glad, thank you for correcting that.
So the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council adopt findings as outlined in the staff report, affirm the environmental assessment, and approve the major subdivision 10-12-12396, use permit 1-16-11898, and design review DR 1-16-11899, subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from the council?
Yeah. The Planning Commission, it was a three, it was a three-two vote. So, what did the twos have to say? I mean, what was their concern? Do we know? I mean, I've got the report here, it just goes on and on and on. I did read it, but it doesn't, it doesn't say what the, I mean, there were several people quoted as asking a lot of questions. Was there anything other than those questions?
The concerns that we, well, we didn't have specific reasons as that vote came along.
Oh, okay, so the people who voted no didn't expound on why?
Did not, not during the vote.
Yeah.
There was some concern about the project architecture, though, that was communicated. The building design is something different than what's in the neighboring buildings. It's, you know, leaning toward the more modern. We are going toward a more contemporary look for new buildings around town. This is, you know, perhaps, you know, one notch higher than the contemporary buildings we've seen, so there was some concern about that, and I think that sort of, you know, is maybe some of the issue you've got.
I have a couple concerns. One is that throughout the, or in the report, it talked about all metals need to be galvanized. Now, I read that there was aluminum, fine, but are there lots of other metals used, like on those railings? Because we're real close to the ocean, and I don't know if the people who are involved in designing this project and building this project are aware of how corrosive that is. I myself have some metal on my house. My house is 20 years old. We have a big problem. The Hillside 88 that used to be landmark, they had to remove all the metal on the outside of the building because it rusted so fast. So, there might be some concern about using galvanized metal, because the galvanization doesn't last that long. And the Hillside 88 building, which was a very large building, things rusted, and then streaks of rust down the building. So here was a building that was built for luxury condominiums, and within several years, it looked pretty tacky. They had to take all the metal off, which was a big job. They had to repaint, and still, the little places where they had to cut the metal off, they did their best to hide it, but if it had been designed in a way where that wasn't a problem in the first place, it may have been a better idea. I don't know what metals people are planning on using, but this close to the ocean, the one thing I can guarantee you is it will rust. And within 10 years, it will show rust, and within 20 years, you're going to have a problem, unless you're going to be up there painting and scraping, you know, once or twice a year, which you don't want, nobody wants to do that. So that's a concern. The other concern is the design of the building. It's not, I actually have a very modern house that was built 20 years ago, and that I designed it myself, and so I really like modern architecture. But it seems to me that this building says, "Look at me." It doesn't say, "I'm a, you know, I'm a part of this community, and I want to fit in." It's like, "I want to be really obvious. I want to stick out." And I don't know if that's the best thing for the city. I don't know. It seems a little cold to me. Even if you just warmed up the colors a little bit, the palette at the bottom of the thing was like red, yellow, and blue, real primary kind of colors. When you look at every other building in Daly City that has been built in the last 30 years or so, muted colors of a Tuscan or, or mission theme. You look at buildings that are built in South City, in San Bruno, in, all around this area, that tends to be the general theme. Whether the basic architecture was more modern, or more typically mission, but at least there was some connection between what we have had and what's moving into the future. So, I don't know, you might want to think about trying to blend a modern architecture with some architectural elements that are more traditional with this city. For example, like when you said you were going to do the, the kind of wood-looking thing- thing at the bottom with the, in the concrete, maybe that's helpful, maybe just coloring it a different color so that you don't have white against the darker color, but, you know, make things a little more subtle. I, I don't know. The red boxes look pretty obvious. I mean, it's real in your face. I know you're architects and I'm just a person who loves architecture, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
I, I like it. I like the modern look to it. I like the, the wood that makes it look really, yeah, sleek.
Yeah, that's good.
So, I mean, it is, it's, it's, it's a corner that's sort of prominent in Daly City that I think people are going to look at it and go, okay, that, that looks really cool. And so, I, I, I like it and, you know, the red probably is, it does sort of make it different. I could go either way on that, but in general, I think the concept is nice and I like it.
Well, you know, I grew up in this neighborhood and I remember going to the Shell Station there and I, I have to tell you that it's been empty for way too long.
Oh, it certainly is, yeah.
And I'm one of those people that real, that, that, you know, for as far as the neighborhood's concerned, I would rather look at that than an empty lot.
Yes.
You know, you know, as far as the design thing, I'll, I'll work with whoever you want to work with as far as getting that designed to, to a place where it's palatable to, to most people. But I think it fits the, the area. I think that, you know, right next door to it is one of the older apartment places in, in Daly City. In fact, the only place that we could really sneak into to swim was right there. So, and behind that is, you know, is the, is the CVS. And so, it's sandwiched in between and then, of course, the senior housing. So, I think it, it fits that area. It fits the fact that you're leaving a, a single family, houses that are coming all the way down Westmore and then you make that, you cross Sullivan and they're not there, they're not there anymore. So, it's just, it makes sense that it's a, that it's almost in a transitional type area. It connects certain areas. It's surely going to connect South Gate, the Saint Francis area to, you know, to the Sullivan area. It's going to connect, you know, the other way, that is, South Gate on the other side, crossing, you know, that, that skyline area. I mean, it, they're, they're going to be able to pull from a lot of services in, in different directions. You know, they can go, you know, up Westmore to, to, to skyline, they can go down and if have to, they can go to Westlake by jumping right on the freeway right there. So, I like where it's at. I like, I like how it's going. And so, what I would like to do is I, I don't have any cards on this issue and I'd like to go to the agenda and see whether or not I can get a, a motion to adopt this resolution.
So, moved.
For a second?
And what is the resolution actually saying here?
The resolution, the recommended action is, is to, to adopt the staff report.
Right, and move forward, but not, this is not the final?
No, no.
Well, this would be the final design because when the city council approves this project tonight, it would be approving the design review aspect of it.
Okay.
And so, to, perhaps one of the things that we could do is look at color, maybe the white and the red are just too stark.
Yeah. I mean.
Maybe we could tone down the red and.
Yeah, here's, here's what I think would work for me. The physical design of the building, I'm not a big fan of it, but I can live with it. But if the overall impression for someone looking at it is more, seen a little bit more as a transition, that it tips its hat a little bit to the colors of the buildings, for example, it's not Monarch Village anymore, but what is it now?
Peninsula del Rey.
Peninsula del Rey, the senior facility that's new and right near there. So, if, if, if there could be a compromise on the colors to just tone down the contrast a little bit, make it a little warmer, and if you want to do some more of that wood stuff in the concrete or some more, something like that, that moves in, in that direction, that's warmer, that's a little bit more in keeping with what we have already, so that this is a change to modern architecture, but maybe not making quite such a big jump all at once. Because I can't believe I'm the only person who would go, mm, I don't think so. Because I want this to be a success.
So do I. And I think that if, if you can accommodate these sensibilities, these design sensibilities we're talking about, and I'll be real specific about the one that Judith brought up, and that is metal. At all costs, try to just keep metal off the building. I mean, if you can, if there's any way that you can do this, do it because it's going to be an issue. It'll always be an issue. Corrosion is just part of life here. It's just, they got to know that.
So, one of, one of the reasons that condition of approval exists is because of eighty-eight Hillside. When the proposal to remove a lot of the metal that was on that building and replace it with, and they actually replaced it with galvanized metal because the galvanized rusts less.
Yeah, right.
We added a standard condition of approval to all new buildings that galvanized or stainless steel would, you know, also be, the problem with stainless steel is very expensive. So, galvanized metal be used for exterior metal surfaces. So, that condition of approvals there very purposefully.
Well, yeah, and it's, it's not going to be, it's going to be their problem.
Right.
But I'm just giving you a heads up.
Well, we'll all have to look at it bleeding, just like you know.
You might want to, you know, triple galvanize or something because my stuff's all galvanized too and twenty years in, we got rust.
There's a motion, a second, we're, we had a little bit of discussion. Let's get that roll call.
If there can be some toning down of the painting and a little bit more warmth on the outside colors.
Yes, we'll, we'll work with them to make sure that the colors complement the buildings to the north a little bit.
Right, just a little better, yeah. Then I'd vote yes.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Yes, aye.
Aye. Resolution is adopted. Good luck, people. Hopefully, that'll work out. We are on item number nine, the award of bids and contracts. Number nine is the award of a construction contract for Muscle Rock Public Access and Amenities and Improvements. Who is it? Ms. Ritchie, come on up.
Thank you for your report.
Good evening, honorable council members. The item I have before you tonight is the staff recommendation to award a construction contract to Southwest Construction and Property Management of San Bruno, California for the Muscle Rock Public, Public Access and Amenities Improvements in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand seventy dollars. This project originally arose from a condition of approval of a coastal development permit that was obtained for the Muscle Rock site back in 2012. In 2010, a section of seawall was identified it as needing repair. Any work that happens below the mean high tide line requires a coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission. As a condition of approval of that permit, this was a condition of approval, this condition outlined that the CDP should develop and construct a public access management plan that address public access, signage, fencing, gabion wall screening and amenities such as picnic tables and benches. Additionally, trash receptacles will be added. One bid was received on November second. I do want to make one correction on the staff report on the engineer's estimate. It was actually closer to one hundred fifty-two thousand five sixty. I wanted to note that, that it was, you know, not as far off from the sole bid received as is shown currently.
So, it was not the ninety-eight thousand?
Correct.
Great, okay.
It was one hundred fifty-two thousand five sixty.
Yeah.
The bidder holds required Class A contractor's license, which is current and good standing, and has positive references. The total project cost is approximately two hundred and twenty thousand. That includes the construction cost as well as contingency, inspection and construction administration. Adequate funding is available currently in the capital project account. Staff is available to provide any additional information or answer any questions that council members may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Does anybody have any questions up there?
Got to be done.
Anybody?
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, this is a resolution requires a roll call.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye, the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. Great work, great work.
Thank you.
Item number ten, we're awarding contracts. The award of a construction contract for 2016, 2017 Muscle Rock landfill site maintenance and seawall repair. Ms. Ritchie.
Thank you. This is another project at the Muscle Rock site. Staff recommends that a construction contract be awarded to Stalaski and Gonzalez of Half Moon Bay, California in the amount of one million, one hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred and five dollars for the sixteen, seventeen Muscle Rock landfill site maintenance and seawall repair project. This project addresses routine site maintenance activities that happen annually, including cleaning of half-round pipes, realigning of the pipes to restore their functionality. There's site movement and, which causes the pipe sometimes to align. We'll also be replacing deteriorated pipe and replacing outfall pipes that have been damaged by the movement of the seawall. A major component and a significant portion of this project is to repair the seawall. It requires stabilization. This past El Nino winter caused quite a bit of erosion due to wave action and this project will restore primarily in the north and south ends and between them so that, you know, landfill material is not entered into the ocean. Historically, approximately four hundred thousand dollars has been allocated from garbage rate revenue for compliance with regulatory agents. That includes the groundwater monitoring that we have to do, any seawall monitoring as well as the site maintenance that are required by various orders. Recently, the Regional Water Quality Control Board rescinded its previous, they recognized the completed actions of previous orders and replaced them with one single order. It required quite a bit of additional reporting, studies, plans. And also, the Coastal Commission, as I had mentioned for the past project, they placed various conditions on our seawall repair project. It took about two years to get the permit. We had to, we had to do site improvements as well as other additional increased monitoring activities and reports. So, currently, this project exceeds the funding that's available and we will need to borrow funds from the general fund capital account. Not tonight, but in the future, staff intends to propose city council approve the creation of a solid waste enterprise fund so that any loans that have been taken from the general fund can be paid through increased garbage rates. The coastal development permit was issued by the Planning Commission and the city council adopted the facts and findings, affirming the decisions of the Planning Commission. The city has applied for an emergency permit from the Coastal Commission. We will need to follow up with a coastal development permit after emergency work has been performed, but this primarily addresses the need for the seawall and to protect the ocean from the contents of the landfill. Four bids were received on November seventeenth. They range from approximately one point two million to two and a half million. The lowest responsible bidder, Stalaski and Gonzalez, holds the required contractor's license and has successfully completed, completed various projects for the city, including several at Muscle Rock and this type of work specifically. The other two low bidders were considered non-responsive because they did not provide complete bid proposal packages. The total cost of the project, including construction, contingency and inspection administration, is approximately one point four three six million dollars. The account currently has nine hundred and three thousand dollars for the project, of which seven hundred and twenty-two is already a loan from the general fund capital account. However, an additional five hundred and fifty, five hundred and thirty-three thousand will be needed to fund the project. So, in conclusion, staff recommends that construction contract be awarded to Stalaski and Gonzalez because the work is needed through orders by the regional board as well as just the seawall needing the work. And staff recommends the authorization of the transfer of the additional funding.
Are there any questions, city council?
So, so the enterprise fund that you talked about creating to pay off the, is it about five hundred thousand that?
Well, it'll be five hundred and thirty-three plus the seven hundred and twenty-two that was already loaned, yes.
And then.
And who knows how much in the future.
How, how will that enterprise fund be funded?
It is through garbage rates. It's currently all activities at Muscle Rock are funded through garbage rates as a responsibility of the city.
And, and when do you expect those garbage rates to go up?
Let me respond to that. We, we are in the process right now of commencing a rate application request from Republic Waste Services. We will be meeting with them and conducting some analysis on the current franchise that the council approved last year. And there will be rate adjustments purely based on refuse collection. In addition to that, we will be adjusting the rates to collect a certain amount of the funding that'll be necessary to do this preliminary work. The analysis that the staff and I have done so far indicates that we are going to spread the cost over several years. So, there isn't going to be one huge rate increase. We would look at it over a period of years in order to be able to collect the funds that we need in that enterprise fund. So, it won't all be at one time and it will be separate and distinct from what the rate adjustments are based on the cost of collection, but it'll be combined in terms of one rate adjustment that will reflect both of those costs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Judith?
No, it's just tragic that all those years ago, people were so stupid is to put a garbage dump right on the ocean and now we're going to pay the price forever. So, it's just a tragedy.
All righty, item number ten, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye, that resolution is adopted. You know, folks, item number nine and item number ten, item number nine, we gave to a San Bruno company in the county. Number, item number ten, we gave this, this item to a Half Moon Bay company. So, just want us, want people to know that we are doing our part to hire locally, okay? Item number eleven is an ordinance. It's the second reading of an ordinance, number fourteen, ten, which amends chapter fifteen regarding a building code regulation. This is for Ms. Zimmerman. The recommended action is to adopt this ordinance. You got anything to say about that?
Thank you, council member Gangona. This is the second reading that came before the city council and it is up for adoption.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So, moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes, aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Rose. Item number twenty, ten is also a second reading. It's ordinance fourteen, eleven. This is amending chapter fifteen point thirty-two of the Daly City Municipal Code and this is regarding the fire code. Rose?
Thank you, council member Gangona. This is the second reading for ordinance fourteen, eleven that came before the city council by way of introduction. It is up for adoption.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I move that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor, please, oh wait, this is a ordinance, needs, requires a roll call.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman.
And just as a short comment, these building code regulations and fire code regulations bring the city's code up to match the state code. And the state, on a regular basis, redoes their codes and then the city must be in compliance with them. And we hassled out all the details and heard all the reports at the last meeting.
Okay, we're at that part of the meeting. Public appearances, oral communications, please note, speakers are limited to two minutes. Bill Lex, come on up.
Good evening. First, thank you to everyone who either serves in or has run for an elected position. Thank you for the time and effort you invested to serve the citizens of Daly City, San Mateo County, and for the courage you showed by subjecting yourselves to the lens of public opinion. In December 2015, Daly City Councilwoman Judith Christensen called for changes in how the city selects its mayor and vice mayor. She claimed the current system, it lent itself to favoritism and locked council members She claimed the current system had lent itself to favoritism and locked council members out of leadership positions. Specifically since twenty-ten, three council members have served as president or vice president, nominating and electing each other over and over again. This triangle of consensus locked out the other council members, a position in which one or both of our newly elected council members could find themselves in, in the future.
That's true.
With the exception of San Bruno, whose mayor is elected directly by voters, cities in San Mateo County generally follow the council manager model of government where council members take turns serving as mayor and vice mayor. In many cases, this is a predictable rotation with each council member serving as mayor at least once for one year during his or her four-year term. As the next council meeting on December twelfth, at the next council meeting on December twelfth, newly elected members Sylvester and Manalo, Manalo, excuse me, will be sworn in and the council will reorganize and elect new officers. After the swearing-in, Christensen will be the only experienced council member who has not yet served as mayor or vice mayor. This injustice needs to be corrected. The system needs to be changed to a formal rotation where each council member serves as mayor at least once for one year during his or her four-year term. While the mayor's role is largely ceremonial, all council members should have an opportunity to serve in a leadership role. This change will ensure that all council members present as well as future are treated fairly and have an equal opportunity to serve as city leaders. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Bill. Next up, Sylvia Alvarez Lynch. Sylvia?
I am Sylvia Alvarez Lynch and I'm here tonight to talk about the future of Daly City. Daly City is facing huge problems in the next several years. Our budget crisis continues, fears of another recession grow, and many of our top leadership staff are approaching retirement. The residents of Daly City expect this council to work together to make serious decisions that will affect our future. The very first vote of this new council is an opportunity for you to show us the type of decisions that we can expect from you. That first vote is a simple task to choose a mayor and vice mayor for the next twelve months. Your election by the people makes each of you equally worthy of a leadership position. We, the people of Daly City, will not tolerate the continuation of petty power struggles, intimidation, bullying, and dishonorable votes for mayor and vice mayor. It has been seven years since Councilmember Gangona has served in a leadership position. Councilmember Christensen is ending her sixth year of service and has never been allowed to serve in a leadership position. They should be appointed mayor and vice mayor respectively. Let me repeat that. I don't know if you, it was coffee.
[laughing].
They should be appointed mayor and vice mayor respectively. I believe that Councilmember Buena Ventura is planning to be appointed mayor yet again, and that would make him mayor or vice mayor four times in the, in the six years he will have been on the council. I call on the newly elected council members to step up and do the right thing, honor the service of your colleagues and the people who voted for them. With your very first vote, you will tell us who you really are, whose agenda you really are here to serve, and you will set the tone for your legacy as a council member. I am hopeful that you will have the courage to be an independent voice that votes for a fair leadership rotation. Thank you. Please make this, these comments part of the record.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lynch. Okay, I don't have any more cards. Uh, let's move on to appointments, board commission, membership committee appointments. Does anybody have any appointments today? Ray?
No.
Judith? No. Reports, let's move on. Uh, council committee reports, any council committee reports? Here we go, we move on. City council reports, are there any city council reports?
I would, um, just like to say something on be, um, regarding the Arts and Culture Commission. I thought that, uh, they did an outstanding job, um, this past November nineteenth when they organized and they, uh, produced one of the most remarkable, um, gatherings at City Hall I've ever, uh, been a witness to. This, um, City Hall has, has, it came alive like I have never seen it before. I thought, um, it was really well organized, uh, wonderfully executed. Um, I want to commend all that participated in, um, the creation of that event. Um, that's the kind of, uh, community, um, involvement that we need. Uh, what they produced with that, um, that heart that was on display at, in front of the, the lawn was incredible. It was a, just, just a, a really good time for a lot of people and I want to really thank, um, everyone who was involved in the Arts and Culture Commission as well as, uh, all the staff that helped, uh, produce that event with them. Marvelous job, bravo.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, make further comment on that event. Light up the world. It was, um, a marvelous thought, a marvelous gesture, a marvelous program. It had great music, great dancing, great food trucks, and wonderful craft projects. It was great to see families sitting down and making crafts together and then dancing a little bit, uh, going out and enjoying a lovely dinner with the food trucks. Daly City doesn't really have, um, you know, people say, where's this, where's the city in Daly City? Uh, you know, where's the place, the main street? Where do we congregate? And this was the place that we congregated. And it really did feel like a community. It really felt like, um, we were all a family. It was wonderful. And, uh, hopefully, there'll be more events like this in the future and that everyone who's here tonight and watching out there will be able to come to the next one. And I want to thank the, everyone who helped put it on, all the performers, the arts commission, everyone. Let's do it again.
Great, great job. Okay, last item, I guess, is, uh, what else you got in there? Oh, adjourned memories. Um, I've got a few adjourned memories here that I'd like to, to acknowledge at this time.
Ms. Mayor, excuse me.
Sorry, did I miss something?
I have a staff report.
Sorry, you know what, I'm missing a page. Sorry, go ahead.
I just have a, a short reminder, uh, for the public and for the council that on, uh, Monday, December twelfth, we will be having our, uh, reorganization meeting. We're combining it, uh, this year with a council meeting. So, there's actually, we're gonna start at six o'clock for the reorg, um, and then we will, uh, conduct all the reorganization and then we will take a, a short adjournment where we can do photographs and have cake and coffee and all that. But then, we will come back, uh, into session for, for a formal council meeting. We do have business to conduct that night. It is our last council meeting of the year and now we'll have two newly seated council members who will, have already been sworn in, so they'll be able to sit as the full council. So, we are going to have a very busy night on the twelfth, but we invite all members of the public to attend the reorganization, uh, and to come help celebrate our new, uh, newly elected, uh, and re-elected officials who will also be sworn in, our city treasurer and our city clerk, uh, and to help celebrate that, but then followed up with a, a council meeting on that night. And as I mentioned, it will be the last council meeting of the year because the second meeting of the month is the day after Christmas, which is a legal holiday for the city. So, um, December twelfth, six P.M.
All right.
Great.
Okay. That was the last half word. Okay, is there, um, we have a couple motions to adjourn. I'll, I'll read them today. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Charlotte Love, who was a former library and recreation, um, department employee. Uh, also like to adjourn in memory of Lloyd Sanchez, who, uh, is John Sanchez, our Public Works employees' father. And I'd also personally like to adjourn in memory of Sebastian. And Sebastian was an icon in San Francisco nightlife. On November seventeenth, we tragically lost him much, way too early. And, um, he will be missed, uh, in, personally, and, uh, in San Francisco. He was an icon. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Thank you very much.